There are eight of those right now. So, six of them are occupied with AT&amp;T's antennas and two are empty. The antennas you see on those photos that are on the top that you can see, those are not AT&amp;T's antennas. Those are Sprint's antennas. So, different company, we're not proposing anything there. We can't actually. So, AT&amp;T is proposing to add three antennas so they have a total of nine antennas. They're going to increase the size of three of those concealment boxes by three inches. So, they'll go from 15 inches wide to 18 inches wide. They're going to stick two antennas in one of the concealment boxes so that way you can fit the nine antennas within the eight concealment boxes. They're also proposing the addition of three, what are called, remote radio head units, which is just another piece of electronic equipment used to operate the facility. Once again, that will be behind the cupola, will not be visible. They're also proposing some additional surge protectors, once again, just equipment, and some additional cabling, which is within the cable route that exists there today. So, the upgrade is really for enhanced services. I'm sure you've all heard of LTE services. I'm sure everyone's using their wireless devices much more now than they did even a couple of years ago. So, this is AT&amp;T's way of trying to keep up with that demand. There's quite a bit of demand for wireless services. So, we ask that you would act favorably on their application. Since we were here last in 2011, there have been some changes to the federal law with respect to these upgrades. I provided that information. I'm not going to review it. I don't see any reason to unless you're very curious about it or if you had some questions about it, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
I just want to note for the record that the applicant submitted their registered notifications to the abutting properties. They mailed it into us already, so we do have that unfiled.
And I do have another copy.
And you brought another copy. Thank you very much. Ready for questions?
Yes.
Ms. Pepin?
I just have a few. So, basically, you're widening some boxes.
Three of them, yeah.
Three. Height-wise?
With-wise.
Just with-wise?
Correct.
Okay. So, and it won't interfere with the cupola?
No.
Okay. And the other note was to match all the color schemes, but if you're just widening it, it's gonna be the same color scheme?
Right. It'll remain white.
White, whatever.
Yeah.
I think that was all my questions.
Okay, Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I have a couple of questions. So, just to boil this down to its most basic, this is really an application to widen the telecommunications equipment that's currently there from 15 inches to 18 inches?
The box that surrounds the antennas.
Okay. So, that's primarily what's really being sought here tonight?
Right. So, they can fit the antennas.
Okay.
Right.
Perfect. So, it's not like putting up a whole new cell tower, a whole new...
Oh, no, 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 no.
Perfect. Because sometimes when people, when they think cell towers, they think...
Right.
The one that comes to my mind is the one on what we know as the Merritt, but it's really the Hutchinson and Rye or Harrison or wherever that might be. So, this is really just a widening of a box that would hold the current antenna and telecommunications equipment right now.
That's correct.
Could you walk us through if there was any other boards or town bodies or offices you had to talk to in this process or are we one of the first steps?
You're the first step and the only step for this type of upgrade pursuant to the federal law, and then we would seek a building permit.
So, you just referenced that this is also to maintain compliance with new federal communications regulations?
Correct.
Okay. So, this is mostly governed by FCC and...
Right. The changes in 2012 by the federal government, basically, what they tried to do is expedite these types of upgrades where you don't come in with a brand-new tower facility, but you're trying to upgrade existing facilities. They really wanted to streamline the process so that these upgrades could be installed fairly quickly.
So, this is more upgrading current equipment as opposed to installation of new equipment?
That's right.
And it's mandated by the Federal Communications Commission?
Right.
Or encouraged by the Federal Communications Commission?
Right.
No more questions, Madam Chair. I think that pretty much puts a bow on it.
Mr. Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to know during the configuration, will there be any disruption of service?
No. No disruption of service.
And how long would this process take?
It would probably take about a week to get everything done and tested and so forth.
And subject to approval, when do you think you can implement these changes?
They'd probably be looking to do it pretty much right when they get their building permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Just to bring me up current, in the past, when I've had to look at these approvals, we often had to then go to the siding council. Has that been eliminated at this point?
The siding council would not have jurisdiction over this type of facility. So, the siding council has jurisdiction over new towers. So, if you're talking about a tower that's a, you know, like the franken pine that you see on the Merritt, that would be siding council. They do have some jurisdiction on what are typically called rooftop facilities, but that would, it really depends on how a facility is defined. In this particular case, they would not have jurisdiction over this facility or the upgrade.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Giuliano?
Yes, just to go back, you're actually just adding one more. You're gonna couple two into one tube or cover, and you're just gonna add one more.
Well, we currently have six antennas. We're adding three more antennas, but we're fitting them in within the eight boxes with an enlargement of three of the eight boxes for the new antennas.
All right. Yeah, because there's a lot of antennas up there.
Yeah. Yeah, well, like I said, the ones you can see, those are Sprint's antennas. So, you know, I'm not sure what their plans are for upgrades.
Okay.
Is there any other questions? Okay. At this point, I'd like to ask the public if there's anybody who would like to speak in favor of the application? Anybody in favor? Would anybody like to speak in opposition to the application? Anybody opposed?
Hi, Tom Golati, 492 King Street. I'm not really opposed to this, but I was afraid that you were gonna say anybody neutral about it. You would forget. I am an AT&amp;T subscriber, so I do, in fact, I do use this tower. Whenever I have a service outage, they always say that it's the Tower on North Parade. So, I believe this upgrade is good. The only problem I have is, I mean, I used to work in radio, so I understand the importance of a tower, a transmitter and location, and this is a good spot. But over the years, there's more and more towers that have been creeping up in the Bell Tower here at Town Hall. And the first few towers, it seemed to me they were inside and you couldn't see them, but they're starting to creep out now. And you drive by and it's starting to be clutter and ugly. You look up there and you see black and you see silver and you see, you know, gray. I think that this applicant should be, all the towers, not just this applicant, but they should be forced to be painted white. Any new tower should be white to fit in. The towers that are currently up there, when their contract expires, I think one of the requirements should be, that has to be painted white. Because I can see it from my house. You look over here at the tower from my house and I could see it, and it's not a pretty sight. And other people driving around town have remarked, they say, "What did they do to Town Hall? I mean, it used to be beautiful." I mean, they just painted the gold dome a few years ago, it was just redone, and now you look up and you see all these things sticking out. And that's, you know, I would just hope this commission in the future would have that requirement that, you know, obviously, when you're driving down the Merritt Parkway down in South Fairfield County, you don't see the towers because they're painted green. And I would just like to see the towers here painted white. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a comment? Hearing, there's no other comment. Any more questions, Mr. Fuller?
It's not a question, but before your time on the commission, before Commissioner Paul and Commissioner Giuliano's, there was a cell tower that was before the commission for the Orono Fire Department, which also upgraded while the emergency and first responder equipment. And the commission had the purview then to mandate what sort of color, you know, the aesthetics of that tower so it would blend in with the tree line over there or blend in with the building. So, there has been presence for telecommunications equipment from the zoning commission when these things would go before the zone. Not everyone does because of the siding council, but when we had that ability, we have been able to mandate that.
Thank you. Would you like to add more?
Just another point about the siding council, and thank you for reminding me. If the siding council has jurisdiction over an application, before an applicant can apply to the siding council, they must consult with the local municipality. So, in a situation where there's a new tower proposed, before it even gets to the siding council, the applicant would have to come and talk with the town about what they want, and that would be the time to say, you know, "Can you look at some stealth? Can you look at painting? You know, that kind of thing." So, there's definitely an opportunity even then for the town to provide its comments.
Well, thank you very much. Yeah, I think the comments are all within the same vein of trying to improve the aesthetics of it, and as the contracts renew, it's an opportunity to look at it. Technology helps a lot, too. It gets, you know, better. Are there any other questions, any other comments? Otherwise, I'd like to take a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, passes unanimously. Thank you very much. I'd like to recommend a five-minute recess.
First, I'll take, I'll motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Oh, thank you. Motion to adjourn the public hearing by Mr. Fuller, second by Mr. Paul. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. And now, I'd like to have a five-minute recess. Thank you.
You mean a five-minute donut break?
Yeah.
Back from recess, and it's, I don't know my watch. 9:29. Okay. The first application, which we heard tonight, was 3500 Main Street. Do we have a motion to take it off the table?
Ma'am Chair.
By Mr. Fuller, second by Ms. Pepin. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Do we want to open up with any questions? If there's no questions, then anybody wants to make a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve 3500 Main Street for the application of 3500 Main Street LLC. I think this is not only in compliance and in goodwill of the plan of conservation development, it's a very smart adaptive reuse. It is a, also consistent with kind of character of Paradise Green, and seeing a petition of over 100 people from the neighborhood also support this, I think it speaks very much in valium to the preparation the applicant put in and also the outreach to the community that they've made.
I agree.
A second.
Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just my comment is that I'm very pleased that this is gonna generate foot traffic, and I love a town to become more with foot traffic and bicycling, and I think this kind of establishment does that. It generates that kind of traffic, keeps people actively walking and gets them out of their cars, even though they're gonna be eating donuts. I just hope the police, I hope the police aren't gonna find it to be their normal hangout now.
Mr. Giuliano, any thoughts?
All in favor of it. I think it'll be a great addition down the other end of the boardwalk, so to speak, and they'll have that, all that parking more and everything, so I don't see any, just the way it is, it's drawn up with the paperwork from Jay and everybody else, it all falls into place.
Okay. I'm gonna encourage the applicant to add a bike rack of some sort. We're gonna need it to work off all these donuts that we're gonna be eating, certainly me. If there's no other comments, I'd like to call this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, Chair votes yes, motion is approved unanimously. Thank you very much. All right. The next application that we heard tonight was 577 Holland Lane. I'm sorry, 950, skip one. 955 Ferry Boulevard from the U B dockside. Would, is there a motion to take it off the table? By Mr. Paul? Thank you very much. By Ms. Pepin, second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Okay. Is there any questions, any comments before we ask for a motion?
Madam Chair, my comment would be to look favorably upon the establishment that brings the waterfront and the marine life to life, and I think a boat showroom does just that, and it's a good idea.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paul, Mr. Fuller?
Actually, Ms. Pepin had...
Can we make a stipulation that when they decide on signage, that they come back?
What kind of stipulation were you thinking?
I can tell you that the Border Zoning Appeals stipulated that there, that no signs ever be placed on the roof of the structure at any time. As a condition of approval, you could certainly reiterate that, but I think it's, you don't, it's not necessary.
That's just on the roof?
Roof, did you?
Yeah, that doesn't prevent them from the normal signage?
Well, what about, what about on the awnings that they were, said they were gonna put some, like, you know, the boat things?
Mr. Fuller?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First, I would like to, you know, don't wanna step on BZA's toes. They're kind of, when they make a ruling, we really can't touch that. So, there is no signage on the roof. It's not permitted. BZA made that ruling. So, I know Mr. McConus had that concern about stuff on the roof. In terms of like an anchor or a boat wheel or a steering wheel, that's not really a sign, that's just decoration. So, again, we really wouldn't have much oversight on that because it's a minute detail. But with the awning question, I believe even the petitioner said that they would have to come back to us for some sort of approval. So, if it seems to make sense for them, that's something they wanna do, they would probably come back to us, if not in hearing, at least in administrative sort of capacity, depending on how it triggers the policy.
I mean, I like the idea of something minute on the awning, meaning, so there's not gonna be any signage on the side?
Let Mr. Hapansky kinda talk to that.
Okay.
Well, it sounds like they're probably gonna propose some of their potential vendors, their vendors, brands to be on those awnings to let people know that we sell, I don't know anything about boats. We sell this kind of...
Well, they said they want to name of the dock, that they're gonna try and get that name.
The short of it, from my interpretation, was they plan on complying with the sign regulations regarding any facade signs or any other branding signs, and if in any way it doesn't comply, they would have to go back and seek a variance from the zoning commission or...
Is it the zoning or Border Zoning Appeals?
I'm sorry, Border Zoning Appeals.
Okay. I mean, I think there needs to be some kind of a sign on there. Because I think people, if they see no sign, then they say, "What's that building?"
Well, I don't think they're disagreeing. All we're saying is that they have to come back for an additional approval.
I think they're gonna be tactful.
If they need it.
I mean, tactful, no, what's the word I want? You know?
Well, at this point, they're not asking for any signage.
Yeah.
They would have to come back and reapply for any additional signage. Now, they may, and that would be taken up by the Border Zoning Appeals unless there's a need for us to look at a change of regulation, but that's not what's being discussed.
Even if they just do awning stuff or whatever, right, Jay?
Right. I mean, if, the only way they would come back for your approval of signs or anything like that is if they're proposing something that significantly changes the project that was approved. They would come back and ask for a modification of an approval should you guys, should the board decide to approve them tonight.
And also, I think they would, because of the property owner, that big roadside side on Ferry Boulevard that says Petco West Marine and all that, I think they would have a space by right that's private signage already approved by the owner. They would probably throw up some sort of sign there as well to help advertise the businesses in the 955 Ferry Boulevard.
Any other comment?
No, I think we just need to explore whatever they need to do to make this business thrive. I never realized how much that they do there for this town and where they've been.
They're in that little corner.
And they have that building on the other side. I probably have gone by there, forget what I've gone by there, not even realizing this, okay? And this is like a big developer for our town, and we need to help them out completely, whatever they need when they come back in, in the legal sense.
I agree with every comment, and I really want to see them succeed. This is a good application for that space, that is dead space that was being used there. The closest thing that it was being used was the icicle, IC place that was not far from that. So, I'd like to see this move forward. If they should decide to come back for signage, we can look at it then. I'm hoping that whoever is on the boards at that point may have the same opinions.
I think they'll do it tastefully, though.
Yes. But in the meantime, they are free to do decorative items, like a ship's wheel and stuff like that, so that's not considered...
You like that ship's wheel.
Yes.
My only recommendation as a condition of approval would be that the plan, the application is approved as per plans and the rendering submitted to the board tonight because that is not the original plan that was sent, that was applied for.
The enhanced plan. Would anybody like to make?
Say that again?
The facade, the envelope of the building is significantly different, and I think it sounds like much better than what was originally submitted for. So, my recommendation as a condition would be that the plans are approved as per plans presented to the zoning commission.
Tonight, to the board tonight.
The revised rendering that was submitted tonight by the architect as opposed to Mr. Knott, the old number four, but what's referred to as the new number four in terms of our documentation, so we have a frame of reference. So, yeah, I don't know if we have a motion on the table.
Not yet. Would you like to make one, please?
I'll make a motion to approve this with the stipulations that it adheres to the exterior standards presented in the upgraded rendition provided to the commission tonight by the petitioner's architect, and also that it adheres to the decisions made by the Board of Zoning Appeals about signage.
Right.
And I second.
Second by Ms. Pepin. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Now, I think we jump to number six of 577 Holland Lane. Would anybody motion to take that off the table?
I make a motion.
Ms. Pepin, by Ms. Paul. Mr. Paul, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Okay. Any discussion? Any thoughts?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Mr. Giuliano?
Now that I see, we never knew until tonight what was gonna be there, and supposedly maybe a diner, okay? But I don't know what the impact is gonna be on that road because it does get thin on each end and the other end is open, but they bottleneck you down. So, there has to be some look at the traffic over there because if you come in from Huntington Road and there's an accident on the parkway, everybody comes off down Huntington Road and that backs up from the corner there all the way up to Hill to Trumbull. And then Nichols Ave Side does the same thing. So, regardless of all that, putting a diner in there, I'm sure it's gonna have more than 15 cars parking in there.
Well, that was just a rendition. Don't forget, it doesn't have to be a diner, nor does it have to be limited to one story. Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, I think Commissioner Giuliano's concerns really are part of the site plan review that would come forward after a zone change. We're looking just to have to make this a CF district right now or turn it into a CF district. But I do have a question for, by Ms. Hapansky. If we turn it into a CF, are we getting rid of the underlying residential zone that it once was?
Yes.
Okay. So, there's no overlay or any...
No.
Option of that nature. I was also very encouraged to hear the adjoining property owner, one, that the petitioner would consult them in the way that they did, but also to have them come on board and really explain the positive of changing this zone into a CF. The other thing I like about it, it's consistent with what Trumbull zoning is across the street, but more so, it's consistent with its neighboring CF zone on other properties. So, it's not like we're having a CA here, a CF there, an LD over here. It's a logical extension of what zoning is there.
I like it. Mr. Paul, sorry.
Once again, it just seems apparent that it is the highest and best use of the land and the adjoining property, and I was very pleased that the adjoining property owners were here tonight to speak in favor. So, all the more reason that if we're ready for a motion, I say that we make a motion that we approve that proposal for the zoning change to CF.
Motion by Mr. Paul?
And I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Fuller. There's only one comment in discussion before we vote, is that this does need to come back. It is a special case so that any plan that they have will have to come back, which should also include a review of the traffic conditions. And it also should include all the stipulations presented by the Planning Commission.
One comment, so the only property that isn't not a CF is that adjoining property?
The Tolan property?
No, that's the only property that's not a CF, yes.
Right. It will be the only property if we approve this.
No, Tolan is an adjoining property owner. There's two residential properties right now. One of them is being changed tonight, and the neighbor who spoke, she lives in the last RS, like residential...
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
So, she'd, so they would be the only one that's...
If we change it, she's the last one.
So, we'll see then.
And also, aren't all...
I guess.
Yeah.
And there's no, and there, there's no house on the adjoining property, am I correct? It's just a property. There's no house. The only house now is this one that's come forward to us.
Correct. And just to clarify, there's nothing that says that they cannot, the next property up, they can't change that to CF, too?
Well, I know that.
You're saying that this is the last...
I'm sure that's...
I'm sure, since the neighbor here was in support, she probably has some thoughts of her own. That was my take on it.
I do, too. And which is fine. But it'd be the only one in, now the other from Hall, the two condo complexes?
That are behind it?
Yeah, that are next to it, you know? They're in RS.
And they're up on a ledge a little bit. They actually look down on the property.
And also, to my understanding, aren't all CFs mandated to have a special case review standard?
Yes, that's what I was just saying.
Yeah, that's what he said. That's why he didn't go with the...
So, there's a pretty strict review for a site.
Right. And that was what my comment was, is that this still requires a special case, which at that time has to and should consider the traffic conditions as well as all the recommendations and requirements that came out of the planning commission. So, those things would be part of that special case review.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Any other questions? And I'll call it for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And I think we're down to the last application at this point, 2725 Main Street. Somebody like to take it off the table?
I'll take it off the table.
Ms. Pepin? Mr. Paul? All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay. Any comments?
Are the antennas, and I should've asked her that, are the antennas that she's adding high to, or are they just contained in the, they're just contained in the box?
In the box. The simple thing is, that I understand, is they already have the boxes there, they're making them three inches...
Three inches wider.
Wider so they can fit more antennas in them. And they're updating the internal mechanics of it and electronics of it. Mr. Paul? Mr. Paul?
Yes, it just sounds like we have a situation here where we're enhancing technology, getting the latest and the greatest, so it's better functional and better reception, and outside of the fact that, I like the recommendation from the citizen that talked about the color, and I think if we're gonna improve this, let's approve it with a requirement that they standardize the color, and we can decide what color...
They're pointing down anyway, aren't they?
Well, the color should match the adjoining structure, in this case it's white.
Yeah, that's not asking too much.
And she did say she was gonna do that, they are gonna be white.
Yeah.
Okay.
No further discussion, I'll make a motion to approve, under the stipulation that the color scheme stay in the same...
Consistent with the surrounding material.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Giuliano, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously, thank you very much. Okay, I think that is the close of this portion of it, now we can go into administrative session. Changed my agenda.
We were currently in administrative session.
Yes, the next part of the administrative session, thank you. We have two sets of minutes to approve, the organizational minutes and the administrative minutes, and I had one thing that I wanted to correct, and I'm checking. Oh, she did her, she did her, I think you did it. No, here it is. The January tenth meeting, I'm just being picky, the call of, yeah, the administrative session, we actually got started at seven fifteen, that was, I mean, seven o'clock, that seven fifteen was left over from our previous...
How it started?
It started at seven o'clock.
We had the work meeting first.
It was one of my more successful beginnings. Is there any other changes that anybody would like to make to the meeting minutes?
No, ma'am, chairman, I'll make a motion to approve both minutes with the revisions just stipulated, by the start time being seven fifteen.
Thank you by Mr. Fuller, second.
I'll second.
By Ms. Peppin, all in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Say that again?
The organizational meeting is...
Of the ten.
Isn't that, wasn't that at seven o'clock?
Yeah, that's what we changed to, both of them are at seven.
Well, yeah, but this one starts after the organization, the organization was first.
Okay, so you just approved both of them?
Yeah, I know, but we changed the time on the other one, and they both couldn't start at, you know what I'm saying, they both can't start...
One should start at seven, the organizational, and then...
Right, they both, so this one did start at seven fifteen, this is the one you were proud of.
Yes, okay.
Okay, so then other one, that's...
All right, so we have approved it, I think we're fine. Okay, the campsite, I don't think, is there any further discussion, and I don't, we didn't do the, 382 was postponed, so we don't need to discuss that tonight unless somebody wants to bring something up. Any zoning enforcement study?
Yes, Madam Chair, zoning enforcement studies sometimes are also constituent-driven issues relating to planning and zoning.
Please.
Just, I heard a lot of positive comments from the new economic development director, but also from the blood officer also putting forty cars back on the roster and taking care of some blood issues, so from residents in my district.
Thank you, okay, duly noted. Nice to have something positive, right? Accessory apartment applications, none that I know of, sediment and erosion control applications, none that we know of, planning projects, the update on the Greenway and the streets.
We have a meeting tomorrow night with Greenway about a draft that BSC did on the design of the extended Greenway.
Perfect.
Complete streets, I don't have anything, we haven't met, so nothing further.
Is there any further, yeah, is there anything further that's happening? I think we're done, aren't we?
Complete streets plan has been completed, we are currently, I think I mentioned it to you all, but maybe it was the Planning Commission, there was a remaining balance from the grant, and I petitioned State of Connecticut OPM to reprogram the remaining funds to help push the priority project further by allowing our consultant to do some more traffic modeling, surveying for the priority project, which is from Barnum Avenue to, I can't remember, the flagpole, East Broadway. So that was approved, which is excellent, excellent news, and our consultant will be pushing that first implementation design a little bit further along.
Excellent. Any questions? We can go into number eight, other items, and we have a couple of items to discuss. The first one, we had started last meeting, which was the extensions and final plans discussions, and as requested, the zoning administrator gave us a summary of the pros and cons of the text amendment, I think hopefully everybody's had a chance to take a peek at it, and we can discuss it a little further if you'd like.
Yes, ma'am chair, you really have two separate issues here, so I think it would be prudent to separate them, because I think we're much more further along on the, what I would call the extension review, I think we, I think people are much more comfortable with where that's going, so that's something that I wouldn't mind putting forward to the Planning Commission over departments as a text amendment. I know there's been some more interesting discussion on final site plan, I don't want the final site plan to hold up the extension review, however.
Well, I think what happened is, is that because it's in the same text of 20.3, we can make some changes, it's, this is purely under our control and timeframe, so there isn't anything that is pushing us along, it is expedient unless we really feel that there isn't an opportunity for it to move forward. I would, I'd like to give it a chance, at least have a full discussion on it, to see if we can do both, since it is in the same text, and if it's impossible and there is a disagreement, or at least not a comfort level to move forward on both, then we'll separate it, but it's all part of the same 20.3, which is the second page of what you have.
I'm okay with getting rid of final site plan review, just because it's gonna force us to be sharper in the first review of, I don't think we're yielding power, I think we're actually diluting power by having final site plan review, because we're not making those sharp decisions upfront, and then we're kind of pigeonholing ourselves in the final site plan review, so why not simplify the process, have a one-time review, make sure we get it right the first time.
I'd agree. Anybody else, Ms. Peppin?
I agree, I agree with Dave.
Okay, Mr. Paul?
I agree also, and I thank Dave for his work in putting together this pros and cons text, it does crystallize the benefits in our decision.
Mr. Giuliano?
I'll go along for now.
You keep us honest.
I agree with everything you're saying, but now, correct me if I'm wrong, that it'll take us longer now, and we'll be here more trying to decipher everything into the finals, so they don't have to come back, is what you're saying? Is that...
Actually, I think we would save more time by not having the final site plan review come back, by having much sharper decisions out of the get-go. Does it mean we have a longer hearing? It could. Does it mean we have a longer administrative session? Absolutely, but what prevents us from having is the extension, six months down the road, when we are bogged down with other stuff, forgetting recently what happened in hearing, getting hold up because we didn't like the shrubbery in the public hearing, or we didn't like what sort of brick or wood they used on the exterior. I think this streamlines it, and I think it means we flex our muscle from the get-go.
I agree. My simple way of looking at it, it forces the applicant to give us the most thorough final application, most to complete, so when we look at it, it is near done, and we're not guessing based on what they're trying to tell us, what it's gonna look like, so I think you'll get a much better application out of it. I don't know if it'll be longer, but it will give us a much more thorough application, so I'm in favor of that. Do we take a vote, or we just move this with the, I guess we do, as a favorable recommendation to have it move on to the...
You put it out last month.
Yeah.
The application has been sent out to all the towns, so it's already, this has already been sent to the Planning Commission for their comments, the application is on the agenda for next month.
Good, so there's nothing further that we need to do with this?
Nope, this was just, the last comment was that you wanted, in preparation of receiving the application next month, the pros and cons list.
Well, we've got more comfort level now. The next item, I don't know, you can help me with, the application to be on the twenty eighth, is that just this is?
That's just saying that this is gonna be on the final site plan review, as well as the extensions, that text amendment will be on the agenda for February twenty eighth, that's it.
Okay, cool. Goal setting. I don't have anything new on signs, although there seems like there might be some opportunity, depending on what the applications come forward might be. The Army Engine Property, Jay, do you know of anything new happening on that?
Nothing new.
Okay. The medical marijuana moratorium, the text amendment to extend it, we're gonna put that on the twenty eighth, you want?
Yep, that's been sent out to all the abutting councils of governments, all their, all the abutting towns, and that is on the agenda for the twenty eighth to extend the moratorium. In addition to that, I have also started working on the medical marijuana regulations that would potentially come before the board for an approval or denial, that would lay out different zones, distances from particular uses, I've gotten some information from...
Based on, based on other towns, Jay?
Based on other towns, yep, and I've gotten some information, and I've had a little dialogue with Commissioner Fuller regarding some other potential components that we might want to include, as well as some comments from Chairman Silhadi from the Planning Commission regarding how we want to discuss or include recreational use of marijuana, should that become federal legislation or state legislation, so we want to make sure we're just covering all our bases, so that's where a bulk of my research is really gonna be tied up in is recreational marijuana, because I know very, very little about it.
I just want to add to one point that I have discussed, whatever this comes out to be, there'll probably be one meeting, I would expect, where we could have a joint meeting with planning to discuss the details of it. I don't think it'll be more than one, but at least one, so that it is a cooperative effort. Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, I agree with having a joint planning and zoning meeting, but also, in that meeting, I would like also to have the public comment section, not like a public hearing per se, but for people to just enter thoughts and information, whatever they feel, I know we have a couple zoning alumni here who want to enter some information, because I'm sick of trying to get a committee together, I am sick of a moratorium. What I am interested in is a policy, so to dovetail on kind of what Minister Abansky was saying, is, some of the things we pitched out there, we took the previous draft regulation, which has a lot of work on signage, setbacks, restanding buildings, special case provisions, a lot of the nitty-gritty about the actual structure, the actual piece of land, what we didn't look at was where it should go, and I think that's one of the reasons why initially failed the zoning commission two years ago, the other one is still trying to figure out the whole legal dynamic of it, but even President Trump has said it's a state issue, so eventually the federal law is gonna catch up to what states are doing. In terms of recreational, it is really no recreational right now, it's illegal in the State of Connecticut, it's legal in federal codes, but it makes sense to kind of plan ahead, should it ever become legalized, is this something the town should want, and I'd also encourage the town council to help the zoning commission out, pass a resolution, pass an ordinance to allow this, do your job.
Well, we might make a recommendation to them when we get to that point. Any other thoughts?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I can see you.
I've heard the public hearing is very, very important, but with that public hearing, there has to be information for them, I mean, we know very little, we can imagine what our citizens know, so we need to tie this into an education session, so people are informed, so we could have an intelligent public hearing where the public knows about what's going on.
I agree, very, very much. This should be a very open process, and we certainly have the time to do it. Any other thoughts? Okay, it's gonna remain on the agenda, so we'll come back to that. Parking, I don't know if we've done anything further on that?
I've been, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, please.
I've been focusing my efforts on the medical marijuana moratorium, the different text amendments, so I haven't done much, haven't done anything with the parking.
Can I make a recommendation, if you're interested? We've got a pretty full agenda with the top four items we just talked about, I would be comfortable, if you are, to strike the parking until it's such time that we can come back to it, and really provide our attention to it. How do you feel about that?
Or we could leave it on the agenda, knowing it's kind of just on the back burner, and just...
Just go over it.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have a hardened feeling one way, I just like to get things accomplished, and having things sitting out there always drives me nuts. Plan of conservation and development, there was a, oh, I didn't bring my copy, a recommendation that was written up and passed by the Planning Commission already, and we are also supposed to vote on it, that was the request for additional funding for the plan of conservation review and the updating of our zoning regulations. Did everyone get a copy of that? Do you all recall seeing that?
It should've been in your packets.
It was in your packets, I know I have mine buried in here.
If people don't have it, I could always run off a couple copies.
I want to get that done tonight, so that it can move forward, because this is the timing to do it. Jay, could you get us some more copies? Does anybody have theirs?
Madam Chair, I feel very uncomfortable making a recommendation for a funding request to the town council when they have to tighten the belt, and we don't even have it on the agenda.
Actually, that was the P O C D, that's what that was, that's about the plan of conservation, specifically, we talked about sending a letter to the town council with a recommendation, and there were three things that were included in that.
A specific dollar request should be on the agenda.
Does there anybody else have the copy? Right now, I'm more concerned that you all have not referenced what we're looking for. Okay, here's what we're gonna do, we still have time, can we make it specific on the agenda for this particular letter and reissue it, just reissue the letter? It was written by, it was a joint letter that Mrs. Silhadi written, I reviewed it, Mr. Abansky had touched it up even further with the language, it specifically referred to an estimated cost to, one, enforce a review that we are enforcing the plan of conservation, that our policies are following through on that, number two, that it also provided funding to review our zoning regulations for outdatedness and updating some of the texts, and to look at where there were conflicts, and that they are consistent with the changes in the state regulations, and third, there was a recommendation to either, there was a number of things, but to fulfill that request, it could be done with either an outside consultant or hiring a planner, but it provided two or three options of how the request of doing the first two options could be accomplished, that was what the purpose of the letter to the town council was going to be, that they could then consider it as part of their planning in the budgetary cycle that's upcoming.
Madam Chair, you know, I think we did receive something in a separate mailing about a week ago, it didn't come in with a package, but it did come as a separate mailing, email.
I emailed it.
Identified.
I emailed it.
And I thought it said that we were going to be voting on that today.
That's correct.
I mean, I didn't bring the letter, unfortunately, because I had this other big stack, but that letter was disseminated about a week ago, and it went along with our discussion that we've had about lack of resources, and it was addressing, it was addressed to the mayor.
Correct.
And we were gonna sign off on that, because the planning commissioners got together and they drafted the resolution, and we were gonna join in and pass it with them.
Correct, but I don't think everybody, yes, that's exactly the case, if everybody doesn't, was not comfortable, and I'm sensing that not everybody remembers that, what we'll do is we'll reissue it, include it in the packet, and more identify it on the agenda for the next administrative session. How's that?
Yeah, I think that would make it a lot more open, a lot more transparent, we, this is something zoning doesn't do often, this is kind of getting out of our purview by making funding requests, granted, it's just a request, it's just a recommendation, ultimately, at the end of the day, the council and mayor could do what they will of it, but all it is, is an official zoning recommendation for funding, in that, and I think in the discussion, once it becomes a full agenda item for the next session, I would like to talk about if we're gonna request funding, that we also request some budget cuts to make it revenue neutral, or identify how this would also bring in money to town, because, let's face it, the Board of, the superintendent yesterday, or Monday, requested a five million dollar increase, that's gonna put our mill rate to forty, we gotta look at how to balance things a little bit, I think we all have the responsibility as elected officials to, if we're looking to add something, we need to take something out.
Well, we can certainly discuss how we want to offset that within our own budget, but we don't have the authority to make those recommendations.
Same thing with what we're trying to accomplish here, we don't have the authority, we, all we're doing is using our free speech to say, town council, mayor, please consider funding X, Y, and Z.
And that's it, it's a recommendation, if the council chooses to accept it, include it, or some portion of it, but they are at least aware of the fact that we see a need for this, and it's not just a zoning request, this is a request that comes from the land use boards, each of the boards are... use boards. Each of the boards are signing off on it as a joint land use request. Reviewing of the zoning regulations and the plan of conservation is for all of the zoning regulations that affect all of the boards. And that's why we had forwarded it off to you. So we'll put it on next month's agenda.
Yeah, just to reiterate, that mail came out 118 for what you're talking about, the P O C D, to everybody.
Yeah, I mailed it out, so we...
118.
That's good.
17.
17, yeah. I sent it off to you as soon as I got it, so, but I think it would have been a better idea to have included it in the package that just received. So we'll do it next month. I think we're good. Is there any, oh, T O D. Is there anything else that you want to bring up, Mr. Paul?
Yes, I do. Just like we're talking about getting things done, I think this body does and should continue to do more than just approve proposals that come before us from our different developers and citizens. We talked last week about T O D, and we had a discussion about the overlay district being a mile, and that being unrealistic. I'd like this commission, this body of commissioners, Madam Chair, to consider a resolution that's going to close that loop down to a more reasonable walking distance from the train station to the Outer Banks. And I think that that should be, and I'm recommending a quarter of a mile, which is more realistic, based on the terrain and the weather patterns we have here in this town of Stratford. I'd like to open it up for discussion and hear from my fellow commissioners, and try to come up with a solution to come back with a resolution for our next meeting.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes, well, the current radius right now is a half mile by the T O D, based on whatever was determined to be the central focal point. I believe it was a train station.
I think it's a half mile from the trans station, a mile from one end to the other.
Yeah, so it's north-south or east-west. It's a mile. Instead of just having a blanket, cut it to a quarter mile, or keep it at a half mile, I'd rather get more meticulous in cutting up the map. I want it off Ferry Boulevard. I want it out of the historic district. I want to push it into Barnum Ave.
So why don't we draft a resolution that can highlight those areas?
Go for it.
And pass it at our next meeting.
Nothing stopping you.
Okay, well, I'm going to move forward with that, and I'll come back in. And David, you know, might I like to work with you to put together that resolution?
Because there's two other things that you brought up in your document you submitted to the commission. A lot of it dealt with a lot of broader issues that's beyond zoning's purview, but there were two other elements that do deal directly with zoning policy. One of them is parking, and the other one is more encouragement or more strengthening of mixed use. I know Chairwoman Phillips has also mentioned a real enthusiasm to strengthen that, too. So I think if we also focus on those two particular elements, as well as fixing the map.
Well, that's a very, very good segue into my next subject I was going to bring up, was parking as it relates to T O D and where we were going with T O D. I was given the liberty at the last meeting to talk to the owner of the area that was recommended by the CSU group to look at the area where the former Bailey's gym was, and I was very successful in meeting with them and having a great conversation with them. And they're interested in talking, which I was surprised, because all I was hearing was that it was a stone wall, and nobody was interested in talking about this. So I have their attention, and I'd like to have this commission be available for a meeting with that entity to discuss how we can work together, so we can resolve our parking problem, number one. Number two, relieve the traffic congestion in the city, in the town center that we have tonight, or today, and also to really look at how T O D can be structured with a mixed use in a lot of areas within a quarter mile of the train station. And I think those are the things that we're in the CSU group study. Those are things that I think are very doable, and I think I've opened up the pathway to conversation with the owners of that property northeast of the current train station. So if you're willing to, I certainly would invite everyone here, all commissioners, and Jay, of course, to travel with me to Manhattan and have this meeting.
Well, we've got a few things on there. Just give me a moment, Mr. Fuller, because I want to make sure I get both Mr. Peppin and Mr. Giuliano. One, congratulations. I think that's a huge acknowledgement and success to have a conversation.
I'm a dealmaker.
Good dealmaker. At least to start that conversation. So I think we can maybe coordinate that through Mr. Habski's office to see, you know, how we can do that. But the other particular issues that I want to come back to, that more regulatory, Mr. Paul has suggested changing the dimensions, I guess.
Overlay district. You're talking about the overlay district?
Overlay district.
For T O D.
Total mile to a, would probably be a half-mile circumference. I wanted to leave, as a start, that was one thing. You also mentioned changing some parking regulations, if I recall, and those are the two things, right?
Well, the parking regulations, the relieve of traffic congestion in the center, and also the ability to really do some mixed-use development within a quarter mile.
That's right, mixed use, because that was something I was interested. So those are three specific things. Ms. Peppin, would you like to comment? I want to make sure everybody has a chance to share their thoughts. If you're at, Mr. Giuliano's ready to go. He's jumping at it.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
First of all, I'd like to commemorate over here Commissioner Paul for probably doing the one best thing out of this whole T O D, is to move it forward to get that one building, because this is what's holding up the whole T O D, is that one building over there. I can't emphasize that more. It was a Thursday night, I was in a talk with somebody, somehow tried to get a hold of them people or whatever, and do something, but obviously you were more on top of that, in your position of what you do. Noah, and to Commissioner Fuller's, I think that's a great idea, moving that over, getting it over to Barnum Ave, of course, keeping it out of the historic district. This is, the last time we talked was the best thing we ever did on this T O D. We need more time to talk about this. Maybe we can push some of this off and spend more time on this. This is, this is what's trying to move our town forward. These are two, but this is just another great thing to do. I mean, we never spent any time on this T O D.
Oh, that's what we're trying to do. That was one of our best discussions.
And then going back, one other thing is, I mentioned, I'd like to, we're not getting involved with economic development. We need to sit down with them and go over, and I, like, some of the parking, some of the building heights. I'm just totally, to tell you the truth, I'm flabbergasted over here that Mr. Paul, if he could make this deal with that, that's unbelievable what it would do for this T O D. That would be, oh my God, that's unbelievable.
Well, we got him to the table anyway. That's a start.
That's a start. Ms. Peppin?
You know, I, well, I, you know, I applaud him also. I mean, you know, we try as a commission to move forward on certain things, and we have so much on our plate, but I can see that Mr. Paul is well-focused and knows where to find a...
Not that I don't have anything on my plate.
Well, he has a lot of experience in real estate, and I think he actually demonstrated that he knows where to call and how to do it. So I also commend you. Because of the changes that we're talking about, I want to give Mr. Habski a chance. Do you want to talk to how or what your thoughts are on changing the distances are for the T O D and some of the other points? We're having a good discussion, so.
Well, standard practice for T O D is a half-mile radius, particularly with the size of our community. I mean, that's not to say that you don't shrink your radius, although it's not really a true radius. I mean, it's a quarter mile one way, a half-mile another way, three-eighths of a mile another way. You know, it's not a true radius. And that's partly because of, you know, we have the historic district there. We're bisected by the, you know, a lot of space is taken up by I-95, the railroad, all those rightways. And the fact that basically 95 up to Barnum Avenue is all civic uses. So you're taking out, you know, a couple million square feet of your most valuable real estate with the building that we're sitting in right now, and the fire department across the street, and...
The high school.
And the high school, and the ambulance, and all the stuff that's over here. So, you know, it's a challenge. I think you start shrinking that half-mile radius, and you really start losing a lot of properties. That's not to say that you don't alter an arm of it. You know, the way I look at it, it's not really a radius. It's more like an octopus. You got a tentacle here, a tentacle here.
So what you're saying is basically, it doesn't have to be defined. It can, it can kind of go a little bit.
It's actually not, even though we use the terminology half-mile radius, which is really where I was going to come from.
Yeah.
It's not truly a radius because of the way we've drawn the map. It's really a matter of how we've drawn the map that we might want to redefine specifically. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, but I think David was right. I think we need to be more specific. We're talking about whether it's a quarter-mile radius or half-mile radius. We need to be able to draw some lines in the sand at the same time, not to include the historic district, not to include this area. We got to be specific, so our community knows that we're thinking ahead, and we got their back. Because right now, it's too global and too generic, and anybody can come anywhere, as we've seen already, and start building apartments without mixed use in the name of T O D. And T O D has gotten a bad rap because it's not being implemented with the right definition of parameters. And all I'm suggesting that we do is, let's put the parameters in, and I like Dave's comment about identifying those areas that are kind of like sacred from T O D for various reasons. But more importantly, the T O D, sure, it's going to give us some economic development enhancements, but the real economic development that's got to come out of this town has got to come from that Army engine plant, and we need to get that on the front burner and get that moving faster than it's been. Because my recollection says, we had a contract and a deal almost four years ago, and we're still sitting here, as recently as two weeks ago, approving some zoning change down there, and they don't still have an agreement with the federal government, who's going to clean up the wetlands. That's unacceptable, and we shouldn't be doing that. We should be expanding. That's the real economic development that this town badly needs, and that's where we're going to have to start focusing, because T O D is not going to be the complete answer. It's just a piece of it.
That's absolutely true. Mr. Fuller?
Thank you, Madam Chair, finally. Appreciate that. First comment to Army engine plant. You want to get it to move. The real roadblock right now is the D E P, the Connecticut D E P, Department of Energy Protection. So any contact you can push, state legislature, governor's office, D E P, or joint agency, the Army's ready to go. From my here, the developer's ready to go, and we did our part. We got the regulations in place. So let's nudge the state, whatever contact anybody has, let's lobby them, let's actually get the community involved. Let's make sure. Hoideck, Gresko, if this doesn't happen, you're out of office. It's that simple. You got to make it. Kelly, everybody. Gomes, everybody. Rosa, Boomenball, Murphy, all, you know, let's mobilize. So let's actually get the pitchforks and fires, and tell them they should be afraid of not doing anything for us.
So hard to do when we leave here tonight, is everybody call their legislators.
Yeah, absolutely, because let's get that state D E P to nudge. In terms of the Bailey's gym, Fright Haven, now first, I commend you for talking to him, but we have to be very cautious. With FOIA, with having multiple commissioners talking to a guy, it needs to be done the right way. It needs to be done transparently. It needs to be done on the books, on the agendas, in minutes. So if you're, if we're interested in talking to this guy, we should have an informational meeting, all of the corps, move the zoning commission and/or joint planning commission. So it's not just this guy's talking, that guy's talking, all of us are talking, and it's not really done up to the board. It look, you know, it just, we got to do this right. We got to do this in a clean and transparent way.
Couple of things that we would do going forward. The very first thing is that we're not an isolated commission. We are part of a town and an entity. So what we would next need to do is to bring in economic development. I commend you. You got a conversation possibly further than the mayor's office, but at the same time, we still need the mayor's office and economic development as part of this conversation. So that's number one. So we can look to put together some kind of joint meeting, conversation, task force with the office. Going back, I'm going to cover a couple of things. Going back to what Mr. Habski had said about the half-mile versus a quarter-mile. What I saw of T O D wasn't so much about a radius. There was a specific map, I think, of which everyone here has seen a copy of it, with the lines drawn around specifically what properties. I don't think it's a matter of changing the radius and just that simple. What I think would be more appropriate is if we looked at that map and made some recommendations, or revisions, if I should say, as to now what do we think should be included in it, and what should not be included in it. And then that document needs to go through the channels that the original T O D also went through, of vetting public hearings, and for those people who are involved to look at it. Mr. Fuller?
Yes, just to kind of contribute to what you just said, yeah, it is about the map, but in addition, what areas to protect, what areas could be serviced by an overlay district like the T O D that's excluded right now. Maybe there's an area that could be beneficial for T O D, something that is more enhanced by higher density as opposed to, you know, what it is currently, or is underdeveloped currently. The other thing we have to consider, too, is, is it really T O D? Is it really transit-centered? Or is this about downtown redevelopment revitalization? I think that's more holistic. I question mass transit in the state of Connecticut. It's a joke. It's an abomination, and it's getting worse, folks. GBTA is cutting bus routes and raising fares. Metro North is raising fares and cutting train rides, and trains are crowded, and it's not getting any better. So it's folly to bind our hands to that system. What we should do is use some of the overlay concept for downtown redevelopment, and yes, we could link it to the train station, we can, but we shouldn't make it just about the train station. What we, I work in downtown Stanford. I work two blocks from the Stanford train station. I drive to work. Why? It's cheaper and quicker.
Okay. Well, I think there's different opportunities for different people, and I think we're, if I'm saying this correctly, we're in the same direction. We're looking more at specifics. My point was not just a terminology of a half-mile radius. I think that's an oversimplification. What, if we're going to be proactive and specific, we should look at that map. Mr. Paul, I'm going to look to you, all right? And we should work with our partners, the Economic Development Commission, the Planning Commission, Mr. Habski, to look at specifically what do we want to include, what do we not want to include, whether to protect the historic districts. Many of those things I can often agree with. But it's just the generics, because I don't think T O D is a bad thing, and I'm resistant to label it as some terrible thing. What I do believe, though, it does require some adjustments, some specific adjustments, not generalities. Mr. Paul?
Yeah, and I agree. I mean, some of the towns and cities are taking advantage of T O D, and T O D is serving a purpose. I mean, I was in Fairfield the other day, and they're building some nice, great mixed-use facilities out there near their railroad station, and I mean, some really nice apartment houses, high-end stuff, and those are the kind of things Stratford can do. But where I wanted to go here is this, as a to-do, we just talked about some high-news-breaking information that's in this room right now, but it needs to go a lot further. I'd like to see it go further, but I'd like to make sure that this zoning commission is the one that's spearheading this, and I'd like to have a way, and maybe a look for you, Jay, to coordinate a meeting internally with the zoning commissioners and our economic development itself, to get on the same page before we go out and meet with the owners of that property over there by the former Bailey's, because we've got to be on the same page to be able to articulate how we see T O D going and how we see the use... page to be able to articulate how we see TOD going and how we see the use of that property.
Before we go through that, I would caution, and I'm going to probably, I know Mr. Florick isn't here officially, but I would probably kick that back to the town attorneys, because I believe by the ordinance, we do not have the authority to talk directly nor negotiate with a property as an entity of the town of Stratford. Mr. Florick, do you want to comment and give me some guidance?
If I may, Madam Chairman. First of all, I am here officially.
Yeah, you're official, but I wasn't sure if you were here today for that reason.
But secondly, I do think that you need to be extremely careful in any discussions you have with any landowner about something like this. I don't know what this board may be called upon to look at in the future and deliberate over in the future, what type of petition, what type of application, whether it's a zone change, whether it's TOD. But if you speak to people directly, and then this board takes official action and you act on it, you're really setting yourselves up for a, an appealable issue if someone is not satisfied with the outcome. And that appealable issue is that you've predetermined whatever the petition is that comes, that has come before you. And your actions in, in speaking with people and sort of trying to push, push a certain agenda or trying to steer the, steer the approval of a certain item is evidence that may be used against you. You're supposed to be a quasi-judicial board. You're not supposed to get actively involved in, in doing that, in, in furthering those types of policies, because you have to be able to objectively determine petitions and applications that come before you. So, the more you get involved in that facet of it, the more your objectivity can be questioned. So, I would be very cautious in doing something like that.
The other part of it is, and this is just from my training from when I was on the town council, we don't have the authority to speak on behalf of the town of Stratford for any kind of negotiation or discussion.
Correct. I was going to say, too, I was sitting there thinking, should I say? Really, in all the discussion I've heard tonight, you're forgetting the one body that really has the determin, makes a determination on this, and that is the town council. They're the only body in town that can decide whether property should be acquired, not acquired, leased, not leased, what the terms are. And so, any direction, any, any attempt in this fashion should not come from the land use board. It should come from the administration and from the administration through the town council.
Yeah. Now, that doesn't mean that, Mr. Paul, yourself, for example, working with the administration, working with the town council couldn't further those conversations in those auspices. So, that doesn't preclude that. It just, as a body, we have to be careful how we evolve.
Yeah, I agree, and I appreciate legal counsel's advice there, but I don't think there's anything wrong with us being at least somewhat included. Maybe not everybody, but I'd like to stay connected to the dialogue. Not that I'm the decision-maker for the town. We should bring the right people to the table. I'm all for that, but I want to stay plugged in. That's all I'm saying.
And, and I can understand that. Just be cautious, be careful that your efforts don't lead you into a position where someone who might not be satisfied with a decision his board makes can say, wait a minute, he needs to disqualify himself from this petition because his actions have shown that he is in favor of a certain thing. That's what you want to be careful of, because then that leads to appeals and appealable issues.
Procedurally, the next step, to give some guidance, would be to have a conversation with your counselor, your town council member, who also would bring in the town attorney, the administration, the mayor's office. That would be procedurally the proper steps to which to go forward with.
Right. And I somehow feel like I'm already looked upon as someone that may have to recuse himself sometimes, because I'm the guy that came out in the press talking about putting a moratorium on TOD. So, I've got a lot of these developers kind of cautious and concerned, but I'll leave it up to our better judgment. If there's ever a proposal on the table that we think I'm going to indicate a conflict of interest with, I don't have a problem with recusing myself. I'm more, more important to me is to make sure that we're going in the right direction with, with the town's economic development towards TOD and other factors that involve zoning, because I see this body not as a body that just approves proposals, but we should be able to create some clarification in legislation that drives the economic development.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes, Commissioner Paul, we are primarily administrative judicial board first. We are legislative in our capacity with changing zoning regulations. So, in that capacity, that's where you're looking for leads on how to help the town grow. It's the legislative function of zoning policy is where that would really come into play. In terms of, say, the Bailey Center, or say, you know, Station House Square someday wants to move out, and then we have this vacant building there, I would recommend that you go to the mayor's office and to the town council, utilize their authority and their powers to advocate for that position. But also, the other thing with the moratorium on TOD, I remember last month you said, since we're talking about TOD, proposed legislative changes, that you're no longer for a moratorium. Is that correct?
No, what I said was that if we put a moratorium on TOD, it puts more pressure on us to get things done. So, I'm willing to be patient and not put the moratorium as long as we're getting things done, such as addressing the overlay district, such as opening up dialogue with the owners of the former Bailey's property out there. So, if we're making decisions and we're moving forward, then I'm not that much concerned about the moratorium. But if we get to the point where nothing's getting done again, then the moratorium gets, I have to force that, because it's the initiative we need to get things moving. I don't think we have to. I don't want to put us under that kind of pressure. I think if we can move along like we've been moving along, there won't be a need for a moratorium, because we'll get things done, decisions will get made, and the town will grow better.
I do want to jump in there. This, you mentioned two things, and the property over by Bailey's. That is not one of our purviews, to move that along. That belongs in the town council and in the administrative corridors of the mayor's office, economic development, and the town council. We certainly can have individual opinions. We certainly all express some thoughts of it, but as a body, we are not that administrative group that moves that along, all right? That is something that can be taken up, as you've said. You've made some phone calls, you can work with your town council member, but that is not our jurisdiction to do. Now, on the second issue, how we look at the jurisdictions of the lines of where, you know, we call TOD, what properties are included, those are regulations. And in regulations, we certainly, that's what we've been doing, we can look at making those adjustments to fix or to accommodate what we now see as more of a reality, recognizing that we have some properties already, you know, in process.
Right. Well, Madam Chair, in all due respect, though, last time we met, first of all, I was given the green light to talk to the owners of that entity. So, that alone was the green light I was given by this body to do what I did. Now that I've done it, I don't want to backpedal. We need momentum, and we need the right people from the town to get together and plan how we're going to approach the owners. And it's not really an owner we're talking to. We're talking to a private entity. It's a corporation. They're privately traded on the stock exchange. So, we're not talking to a person, we're talking to a company.
We're not changing, that's, you were given the green light as an individual, and you've done a tremendously good job. All we're suggesting is that now you take it to the next level, which is to talk to your council member and the administration.
I agree with that, but who's going to be at the table talking to this entity isn't going to be the town council. It's going to be people like Jay, it's going to be like economic development, and it might even be the mayor. But then that's the part, I think, that, that's where the rubber meets the road. Those are the individuals that are going to have these discussions and put together the strategy to make things happen, and they're going to come back to the council and get approval. But I don't see the council getting on a train and going to Manhattan to have this meeting. I think it's going to be economic development, the mayor, and anybody in the planning and commission of the administration of this town. I could be wrong, and the attorneys. They certainly should have attorney there as well.
Mr. Fuller?
I think you're underestimating the town council as a collective whole and as the sum of individual members. We have a council member right here. He has, his title gives him that authority to do that, to have those conversations, not just...
Well, I'm glad to hear that. I didn't know that, but if that's the case, I'm happy to hear that. I'm not discrediting them.
But it's important to adhere to the chain of command, the rules of order, our limitations. We shouldn't overstep our limitations, because that's, that's not good government. But to put the ball in motion is a good thing, but you have to be careful. You don't limit yourself and take yourself out of the game because you got in too procedurally deep, and then you underdo, you have underdone everything that you fought for.
Point well taken. Point well made. From this point on, I think what we'll all do is go with the guidance of our legal department and those with the experience to make sure we stay on safe ground.
Well, what I did here, and I'm trying to gather the responses, and I'm certainly open to some help, am I, am I getting a clear message that everyone would like to revisit, all right? Maybe in another informational session or something, to look at specifically the map and what properties are included and make recommendations to changes? Is that what I'm hearing? Yes, no?
The TOD quarter-mile version.
You're talking about the TOD overlay district of a quarter-mile, a half-mile, whatever we decide to make that.
I'm not even calling it a quarter-mile, half-mile. Stop talking about half-mile, quarter-mile. We're looking at nuanced maps. Let's stop using the broad stroke here. Let's look at the map.
I just said that. I just said that. I'm not using the quarter-mile because it's not really relevant, okay? I'm saying, if I understand this correctly, and I'll say it again, to look at the existing map for the TOD, which has all the lines, some of it's half-mile, some of it's a quarter-mile, to look at what specific adjustments you would like to make. Am I hearing that correctly? Yes, no?
Yes.
Good. Linda?
Sure.
Absolutely.
Mr. Giuliano? Mr. Fuller?
Can't hurt.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Mr., uh, let me think for a second. We probably should put some time aside to that.
But does that go, too? Because we still have time on that, that we want to do building heights, parking, there's all kinds of other things on that TOD.
So, a couple of things open.
Well, I just thought, we were just going to look at the map, but there's so many other issues to go. That's what I said in my opening thing, that this thing, we could almost not do a night of this and spend a whole night on doing that.
I'm making sure what the...
You know, the next step is for...
I think the next step is for everyone to look at the map, to look at the regulations, and to basically give your assessment of it from A to Z. Every single section, I like this, I don't like this, I don't like the density, I like the height, whatever it happens to be. I want these properties, and then everyone, I think, comes in, and we have us, we have a, we dedicate one administrative session, the public hearing before, we tie up all loose ends, so that our next administration, we could sit down at the table and we can really look at all the maps and, and discuss it. But I think it's going to be hard to kind of do it all as a group, the initial work, which I think is just your assessment from A to Z of the regulation as well as the maps.
Well, let's do that at least. I probably will come back and ask if we still want to take a look at parking as a separate and signs as separate, because we, that's a big task to take on. So, for the agenda, the next TOD, why don't we look at each of us going back to that regulation and mapping out specifically, like Jay said, what we like, what we don't like, what we want to change, draw it up, mark it up.
The map is look, is on the planning and zoning webpage. That actually has the TOD boundaries, as well as it has the TOD one areas that require the activated space, and it also has just the TOD regulations. So, everything is on our, on the download documents page.
Sound good?
Absolutely.
Go for it.
And if anyone has any questions, or they're going through it, just call, come by the office. I'd be happy to discuss and talk about it.
Well, there's nothing else, Madam Chair?
Not that I know of, unless there's any more comments.
I'd like clarification as to where we go with the proposed meeting with that private entity. How do we suggest that go forward?
The next conversation you should have is with your town council member, and through your town council member, I would take it to the administration and work with the economic development director and the mayor's office. In short, your council member is, or a council member is your advocate. Mr. Fuller?
This analogy I could give is a football game. You're handing it off to the running back. That's the town council, and, you know, the score of touchdown is the whole town involved.
Great analogy with Super Bowl coming up Sunday.
It'll certainly be here to report on, so you can tell us how that proceeds. If you do need another member to join you, we can do up to two members without it becoming a quorum for the zoning commission. That helps. Is there any other...
I make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. Second by Mr. Fuller. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes yes. Thank you very much. Good discussion tonight.